Welcome to the City Council Meeting tonight. Today's date is January 14, 2019. It's 5:30. We're at the City Council Chambers located at 10 West State Street. Notice to the public, the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any items on the agenda. You're required to step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Limit your time. Use to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given an opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and council and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, those who are able, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Very good. Are there any comments that the council members or city administrator would like to make at this time? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
I'd ask for one to be removed.
That's right. I'm sorry. Number nine. Right.
With that, I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you. Were the first voters okay with that removal as well?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hoop? Have you a guess with the removal?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Would you please read them, Madam Secretary, except for number nine?
Approve council minutes of December 26 and bill is of $2,247,333.17. Approve the October financial statements. Approve resolution approving the renewal of the 20-E agreement between the City of Marshalltown and Iowa Veterans Home relating to police protection for two fiscal years ending June 30, 2021. Resolution authorizing police officer hiring incentive for Iowa Law Enforcement Academy certified officers. Resolution authorizing police officer recruitment incentives for City of Marshalltown employees. Resolution rescinding portions of resolution to remove a $250,000 reserve requirement from Fund 031 Building Maintenance Fund. Resolution moving the financial accounting of the Coliseum Fund 50 to Fund 001 General Fund. Resolution designating unallocated solid waste management assessments to Fund 355, the Dangerous and Dilapidated Building Fund.
And then number 10 and 11?
Resolution approving agreement by between the city for bridge construction services and approve just to cut new tree trimmer application pending insurance certificate and Iowa sales tax number.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go on to item G, which is reports and...
I gotta go to number nine first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's now address number nine. Thank you.
Resolution approving the creation of a full-time transit driver and part-time janitor in fiscal year 2019.
Any staff discussion on this one?
This was one of the items that we had discussed at the December 26 sort of general budget discussion to transition basically a currently vacant part-time records position into a part-time janitor position in the police department and then to hire a full-time transit driver and not in place of vacant part-time positions but in addition to vacant part-time positions which we have been having a very difficult time filling.
Any further staff comment or questions by the council?
My concern would be, I still feel that the transit situation here in town needs to be looked at and evaluated. And I think it's not a good time to put another driver on the staff till we talk about it. And with that being said, I would like to split these two jobs to vote on and I would make a motion to not have a full-time transit driver on that.
So, Your Honor, my opinion on that is that we should leave it as is for this year. And if it's an issue that we should address next year during our planning meeting, we should bring it up then because this wasn't on the radar at all to change our transit program for this coming year.
It's been an issue for several years though and there is a study started to look at the transit.
So if I may add, I wouldn't say I disagree with anything you said, Councilor Hoop. Unfortunately, averaging the last couple of years with the staff that we have currently, we end up paying about $30,000 a year in overtime, which is 60 to 75 percent of the cost of adding another full-time driver. We have four part-time drivers, budgeted four, but we currently have one part-time driver and we hired that driver approaching three years ago. We've had zero luck in three years of adding part-time drivers. I don't want to get into a debate here, but certainly you and I have discussed and we should discuss as a council, the dangerous cycle that if we reduce miles driven, we reduce federal and state dollars and then we just start a cycle of reducing miles until we're down to zero. So, I'm looking forward to the results of that Iowa State study, hopefully assisting us and maybe consolidating some routes, but we have to drive the miles that we've agreed to to receive the funding that we get to pay the fees for the buses and the fuel and the drivers we get. And I'd be more than happy to continue the discussion later now whatever the council wishes, but I would recommend that you approve this full-time driver at this time. Can I answer any other questions?
Any way to do the quick math on what the difference will be?
Between the overtime and the, I believe it, it's probably, if I remember the HR Director spreadsheet, I want to say even with benefits and the starting salary for a full-time driver, I want to say it's $48,000. Does your, Jessica, do you remember? I mean, so, yes, there is a savings in not having a full-time driver, but we still pay overtime and we have every year. So, you can make the argument that we're saving money, but we have, this is money that we have budgeted or it's money that we're already paying in overtime regardless if we don't have another full-time driver. Yes, sir.
When do you expect to see the Iowa State study back?
I'm not sure at this time. We haven't had any communicate, you know, the tornado disrupted our communication and I haven't heard anything and I don't think Jessica has either.
I have not had a date of when they, they hope to have something back to us yet. I know that there was some students that they had working during the summertime and then I don't think they had anybody working during the fall semester and I'm not sure if they have a student or others working here in the spring semester. So, but I have asked for an update.
Okay. Thank you.
The overtime concerns me on are we going to burn out other drivers. I would say the average is 48 to 55 hour, I mean, that's driving a bus a week and that's, to me, that's not what these employees signed up for. They signed up for 40 hours a week. If we ask them to drive 42 or 44, maybe that's acceptable, but we pay, in my mind, an exorbitant amount of overtime because of our lack of staffing to drive the miles that were required to by the federal funding agreements that we signed. So, I hope I'm making my point of it. It's a catch-22 if we start cutting back miles. We're going to cut back funding as well.
Will it be easier to find a driver than it is to find two engineers?
I'm hopeful we do have a part-time, the one part-time driver we have right now has stated that, yes, she would be very interested in full-time employment. So, yet again, to me, we're going to end up swapping out a part-time for a full-time and then I'll be, as I said, it's been three years since we hired her. I'll be surprised if we find another part-time driver. So, I don't know that we're fully solving our problem, but I think this gives us the best opportunity to put the most driver miles available. It's, I agree, it's not the, it's not the ultimate decision if we had other options, but I think this accomplishes the most of what we're looking to do.
Any questions or feedback from others?
Your Honor. I wish we had this discussion prior to this point. However, anytime you do something or, and I appreciate Councilman Hoop's concerns, anytime you change some things or anticipate some things, you get into unanticipated consequences. And this situation is ripe for that. It's a lost leader, I know that. It's also required, we have a contract, we have goals set and so on. It's a public service. So, I'm, I'm at least in for more discussion, but I think you've presented some contingencies here that, and some follow-up that is valuable. So, thank you for that part. I don't know where I am on this yet, but...
And we've, we've made it this far. I would agree if, you know, please don't kill it. If you'd like further discussion, let's facilitate that further discussion.
Well, so this is for next year's budget, correct?
It's in this year's budget as well. Like I said, we have four part-time drivers and we have, I think, in my, in my tenure, which is approaching five years. And I, I would be hard pressed, maybe the first or second year, we might have been fully staffed with part-time drivers, but we just, we struggle with finding part-time drivers and retaining part-time drivers.
I'm wondering, is wage scale the problem?
I would think it would be part of the issue. Another issue being, just like the school system, we have a heavy rush in the morning and we have a heavy rush in the afternoon, so you end up working for a couple hours, coming in at six or seven. So, the salary is an issue, but the split schedule is also an issue. To me, that's why the full-time makes it more enticing that you also receive benefits for your effort of being basically a split shift.
When would you be looking to post this position, then?
I would be ready to post it upon approval. And like I said, I believe we have a part-time position that would be, that would be very interested in full-time employment.
But it would go, I mean, it would be a publicly posted position?
Correct.
And you're just going to see what kind of interest you get and just like a normal hire, right?
That's right. We would follow the normal hiring procedure.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one more comment. I'd like to, I understand Mr. Hoop and I agree with him. I'd like to see the Iowa State study and see where we're at, but I'd also like to, during this budget process, take a look at the wage scales and see if, if we're asking people to work part-time for six or seven bucks an hour, you're not going to hire anybody.
It is higher than that, I can tell you. I believe, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe our, our starting salary is either between, it's between nine and $10 an hour and it might be $10 an hour.
They can go to Hy-Vee or they can go to Inplate and get 10 bucks an hour. So, if we want to get good people, we're going to have to pay a little more salary. So, I, during the budget process, I think we need to take another look at some of those items.
That's true for the engineering. That's it. Okay. Thank you. I've forgotten where we are procedural. I think there is a motion that has been made, but I'm not sure it was seconded.
There was no second on Counselor Hoop's motion.
Well, let me propose...
So, the motion was to just, just separate them, I mean, just, yes, on the, you were voting in favor of the part-time janitor position, correct? So, I would second that and we can vote on that one, I suppose.
Cahill?
Yes.
Actually, we probably ought to ask for public comment too first.
Seeing none, continue.
Motion to approve only the part-time janitorial position. Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Okay. I know that we are really overworking our staff, city staff here and they've just done a marvelous job. I'm amazed at how much they've been able to do. What I'd recommend on this issue is that to the extent you can extract a little more extra time to check with Iowa State and get Jill to help crunch the numbers on how much will the incremental cost be going to a full-time person, that would be helpful to get that information and...
Okay. I didn't know if there would be anyone to make a motion tonight or if there was felt, because we did discuss this previously.
I would like to make a motion that we approve a full-time transit position as stated in the, in the resolution.
Second.
Discussion by councilors on this one.
I'll second that to discuss.
Any public comment? Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Now, we're up to item G on reports. And we start with Iowa Veterans Home. I'd like to welcome Dex Walker from the Iowa Veterans Home to give us a report about it.
Do I need to submit those electronically or can I just...
Oh, you can just hand them out. Pass them down.
Jeez.
Good evening. Commandant Timon Odery is my boss. I serve as his executive assistant, but he wasn't able to be here tonight. He has a meeting in Des Moines. But I was very excited to be here because I think that a real opportunity that we have at the Iowa Veterans Home is to share our story and to celebrate the fact that we have been part of this town for over 130 years. And so, when I was thinking about an opportunity to put together an annual report, I really just wanted to give a nice snapshot that informs our community, the council and our mayor of what our mission of service looks like current state, who we're serving, what our employee makeup is, and then maybe even a little bit of a historical snapshot of who we've served over the last 130 years. As far as our census, currently, there's 501 residents that are living at the Iowa Veterans Home. About 440 of those people are receiving nursing level of care, but we also provide residential services. Of our census, 412 are men, 89 are women. And we serve a wide age range of persons, our youngest being 49 years old and our oldest being a veteran who's 102 years old right now. The average age of residents receiving nursing care at the Iowa Veterans Home is currently 76 years old. For those who are living in Heinz Hall at the residential level of care, the average age is 69. For those who are not familiar, the differentiation between residential services and nursing services is that while people at the residential level of care are able to maintain most of their own activities of daily living, those who receive full nursing services, those who are familiar with nursing homes and their level of care, that is what we're most close to. For, as far as who we're serving currently, in order to be eligible to move into the Iowa Veterans Home, you have to be an honorably discharged veteran, the spouse of a veteran who is currently receiving care at the Veterans Home, or a widow of a veteran. Currently, 43 of our veterans are from the period of World War II, 60 served during the Korean War. Our largest population are Vietnam veterans, 237. We have seven veterans who served during the Gulf War and 83 veterans served during peacetime. One remarkable fact is that if you go back to 1887, when our, our mission of service really began, we've served just under 20,000 veterans and their spouses. As far as employment goes, Iowa Veterans Home has had a longstanding reputation for being a large employer for our community, one of the largest. Currently, we have 882 staff, 684 of them being full-time, 121 being permanent part-time employees and 77 temporary staff. As far as longevity goes, we have an incredible number of staff that have served at the Iowa Veterans Home for many, many years. Five of them serving over 40 years, 28 serving between 30 and 39 years, 111, 20 to 29. 230 have served at the Iowa Veterans Home for 10 to 19 years. And we have 508 employees who have 10 years of service or less. What makes us stand out when compared to other nursing homes and other veterans homes across the country is that while there are 156 state-operated veterans homes across the United States, the Iowa Veterans Home is the sixth largest in the nation. And what makes that incredibly important and stand out is that when we look at other veterans homes who have a larger census than us, they seem to situate themselves in more populous areas of our country. So, to say that we have served the number of veterans that we do, that we employ the number of people that we do and that we find ourselves in a, in a town of 25,000 people and not 150,000 is quite remarkable. But what that also provides is that for the veterans of the state of Iowa, when they're seeking long-term care, the Iowa Veterans Home can provide them a level and quality that can't be rivaled by many nursing homes in the state. We have 24-hour nursing care. We have physical therapy, occupational therapy, optometry, dentistry, podiatry, a full range of mental health services on campus. But we also have a lot of support services that are available to our residents that go above and beyond, whether it's our arts and crafts, our music therapy, the financial services we provide our residents. We have a wonderful recreation team. I'm sure all of you and the, the community around me has seen the Iowa Veterans Home's buses at our places of employment, at our places of gathering, of worship. The Iowa Veterans Home has and will continue to be fully acclimated into this community. So, it's so important that we take an opportunity to celebrate that partnership and that legacy of service to Iowa's veterans. I also want to encourage anyone who has questions about how they can be part of what we're doing every day to seek out opportunities for volunteering. One of the really incredible bits of information I pulled together in preparation for this report was a really quality look at the volunteer hours that are poured into the Iowa Veterans Home by the people who reside in Marshalltown. When I looked up all the volunteer hours just by separate organizations, they totaled over 17,600 hours donated just by the organizations and the community churches and the veterans groups that we all participate and enjoy in Marshalltown. So, that's a real testament to our service and our commitment, not just as employees of the state, our commitment not just as the families of the residents who live there, but our commitment as a community of Marshalltown that has benefited from the Veterans Home being here and will continue to in the future. So, thank you very much for your time and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions?
Only a comment that I have many friends who work at the vets home or volunteer at the vets home and they, they love it there. They personally are some of the best people I know in this community. They love being there and love the residents. So, I think it is a wonderful partnership with Marshalltown. We're really, really blessed to have you here.
Well, I grew up here too and I have a lot of memories of spending my Fourth of July's on the IVH grounds. And it's a special place because we don't go to work just anywhere. We go to work in the home of some of the most special people in our entire nation and it's nothing to take lightly.
The morale is, is up there from clients and people that work there that we hear from. The Commandant's a wonderful man. I know he had to be in Des Moines on some budget things, but I hope people will take the opportunity to go meet him. He's a great asset to our community. And one of the most fascinating things that happens here is the interviews of the World War II vets and other vets that have just been fascinating. I haven't missed a one that I could get to and I've really enjoyed the ones that I could see. So, shout out for that too.
We're down to only 44 World War II veterans at the Iowa Veterans Home, so we need to celebrate them while we can.
Exactly. Well, thank you much. Okay. On to our next report at the Water Works.
I'm Ken Vincent, 309 West Southridge Road, here representing the Marshalltown Water Works. I'm one of the trustees. I'd like to comment about the Veterans Home. I'm one of those volunteers ever since I retired, but I've been out there about a year now. And you just, unless you're there and witness what's going on, you have no idea. It is a wonderful, marvelous place. And my wife's father, my father-in-law is one of those 44 World War II veterans and she was there today and the care that they get is just phenomenal. The staff just love those old guys and it's just wonderful to be a part of that. So, I'm here to introduce our new general manager at the Marshalltown Water Works. Her name is Shelley Lovell. I'm going to turn it over here in a minute, but I just want to tell you that she has some big shoes to fill with Mr. Lamer and then with the loss of Steve Sincox. But as a board of trustees, we are very confident and very pleased that she's going to be our general manager. She's been here since November, so I'd like to turn it over to Shelley.
Thanks, Ken. Good evening and thanks for giving me a few minutes to come introduce myself. I maybe would just start with saying, I really like Marshalltown. I used to spend summers here when I was much younger with cousins. I'd come spend weeks during the summer and, but it's been quite a while since I've been here and it's really been pleasant to spend time here. Just a really nice group of people make up this community. Working with city staff since I've been here, very supportive group. And I have to tell you, at the Water Works, I just, I couldn't have asked for a better group. They have had to endure quite a lot in the last year, as many of you have with the tornado, but also with the loss of Steve Sincox. It's been a tough year for them and they just keep pulling together to make things happen and they, they really, I can tell, are very dedicated to what they do. They understand the importance of their role in public health. I'm very impressed with every one of them. And so, I really feel lucky to have, have the opportunity to serve in this position. A little bit about me, I grew up in Cedar Falls, Iowa. I have been in the water quality industry, I'll say, for about 30 years, working mostly in drinking water, somewhat in wastewater. I spent a fair amount of my career working for the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, both as a field inspector and in management. And I also spent some time in management at the Cedar Rapids Water Department. Leon would remember John North. I had the opportunity to train under John North, who was a great mentor for me and probably taught me most of what I know and the philosophies I have about the importance of drinking water. And most recently, my position was with the, now the Iowa Regional Utilities Association south of here and a great customer of ours now. So, I'm, I'm enjoying myself. I love Marshalltown and I'm really happy to be here and I appreciate your time. Have you got any questions for me?
I love the envelopes that tell us how many times we've won that totally blind taste test.
And, and you know, when I see the, when I see the year on there, the latest year was 2016 and I think, you know, when people let that year get too far away, it doesn't look as good, so we have to make sure we try to keep that up.
Exactly. Well, we really do have great water here.
Yep, it is. You had some great planning and, and it is really a, it really is some of the best tasting water. I will tell you, coming from the Rural Water Company, we bought water from two different facilities and had a water treatment plant that they run themselves and the people that got Marshalltown water were the happiest. They like it, so...
Sure. Well, thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep up the good work and welcome to Marshalltown.
We're really lucky to get her. Really lucky.
Having lived in Okoboji and Iowa City, I can tell you, the water is a lot better here. All right. Next item is, let's go to H on the agenda and resolutions. First one, would you read that, Madam Secretary?
We have a tabled motion. Is there a motion to take off the table for discussion? Resolution authorizing sale of city-owned property located at 22 North Center Street.
Is there a motion to take that off the table?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call on that one?
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Anyone who wants to lead the charge?
Yeah, I'll start off just with the history was this did, there was a request-for-proposal process that was put out for the sale of twenty-two North Center Street, which is the Police Department building. There was one response that was submitted immediately, and then another offer came in during the timeframe where additional offers could be accepted before the original public hearing, which was held on November twelfth. And so that offer from Mark Eaton had some contingencies. Those were, I believe your reasoning was to let those contingencies, see how those would be resolved before taking action on this one way or the other. We're at a point now where those have been resolved. And so what you have before you is, again, the authorizing the sale of city-owned property at twenty-two North Center Street to YSS of Marshall County. One new piece of information that their director, David Hicks, has provided to me since November twelfth is that they have received a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Ann Kaiser Trust to use for building renovations and repairs. And so that's one thing that wasn't there before, and that was kind of one of the questions that I think was outstanding previously. So I know that David is here, as well as his board president, if there would be any questions for them.
Before you start, I don't think most of the people in the room will know that you got the top-level award by YSS in December, and I just need to tell people you did that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. David Hicks, Director of YSS here in Marshalltown. Yeah, just to echo what Jessica said, we received, we applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant through Ann Kaiser Trust, which then I will hopefully use as a match to draw down another fifty thousand from another local foundation and then have a, probably a small, reasonable capital campaign on top of that. We see just tremendous potential in that building to be everything we want it to be. We're a very diverse human service agency, much like the Veterans Home, caring for our seniors. We pride ourselves in caring for the youth of Marshalltown. Several programs ranging from infants all the way to youth transitioning into adulthood. So we have found that property to certainly meet our needs. We've been in that basement for, well, since the tornado, so plenty of time in that basement. So we're well aware of the capacity that we could provide to the community and expansion of our services if we were to receive this building. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I think we need to have a discussion on selling of city property. I think we need to put, have a standard for a minimum price. I'm not opposed to selling the city property as long as we're getting the value out of it, and the citizens of Marshalltown expect us to get our value out of a piece of property that we're selling. I was glad to see that one of our low-cost housing persons went from a dollar up to twenty-five thousand now, and I think he got the message. So I'm not opposed to selling this piece of property to these people. I am opposed to the price that they're willing to pay because we're going to end up spending eighty-some thousand dollars to make it so that we can separate the two buildings. And I think they should be involved in some of that cost, and I think we, as a city, need to set a minimum price that we want for that building. I had a conversation with the city administrator today, and I agree with her that we need to have a twenty-eight AE agreement with the new owners of that building on how we're going to take care of the elevator, because they will use that elevator, too. So they need to be involved in the cost of maintaining that facility and if we have to upgrade it with those costs. So I would move that we, excuse me, would we still have a motion on the floor because the original motion was tabled?
That's a good question.
It's been taken off the table.
Yeah, I think it was taken off the table, so now we're just in open discussion.
I would, I would move that city staff prepare one more round of bidding and that we set a minimum, minimum price that we'll accept and have that like eighty percent of the assessed value or seventy percent of it or something like that, so that we have a minimum price on the building. I just think, I think offering thirty-five bucks is just kind of a, not a realistic number for us to accept, but that's my own personal opinion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Would that include, this is an interjection, would that include, do you want that to be for every building that we're looking at? Do we want to set a percentage of whatever percentage we're looking at for future? Would that be fair?
We can. I didn't.
My preference would be that this be some, if you want to talk about this in relation to other properties, that it would be on a property-by-property basis, and that ultimately I would, my preference would be that Councilmember Lamer's motion include actually what you want, because I don't want to get caught in the middle of trying to figure out what four of you want, and I would prefer that that be clarified now if that is the direction that you're going to go.
Well, the build, to do the wall and to put a new furnace and air conditioning system in, and then we have to, we have to separate all the water systems off, too, don't we? And the gas systems? So that's going to cost.
Those are already on separate meters.
Are they? Both buildings are separate?
Yeah, for police and fire, for the police and city.
But the furnace isn't, is it? Don't we have to put a new one of those in?
It's, yeah, so it's currently, it's a boiler system that feeds into City Hall but is based in the police building. And so by installing a new HVAC unit in City Hall and disconnecting the boiler from City Hall, you're not having to move too many of those lines.
But we have to put a new boiler in City Hall?
We'd go with four stair, yeah.
Something, yeah, yeah.
Which is part of the calculations that you've mentioned.
Okay, seventy percent of the assessed value. How's that sound?
Do we have a number on what the assessed value is? Is that something that?
I can pull that up here momentarily. The assessed value of the building is two hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, meaning that seventy percent would be one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
We were going to let a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar building go for thirty-five bucks? That's not really good.
Can I also ask what the other plans? I know that we'd had one other bid on the building, but there were a number of contingencies that I think have, I don't know if that renders that bid, if that bid is still valid, because the other contingencies, it was, Mr. Eaton wanted it with other properties, so I don't know if he still has an interest in this building alone?
That would be why you would want to then issue a new.
Issue an issue, okay. And is there a clarification of what our costs are? I know you've thrown out several numbers here, but I guess I have not seen it on paper, what our costs are for the actual, to have the building, to turn it over to someone else.
It was issued in a memo. I'm just going to try and pull it up here from the network.
Wasn't it a hundred and eighty-six thousand?
It was, I'm going to try and find that here to make sure I have it correct.
And I thought a hundred thousand of it was for the elevator.
So I believe we talked about it on September twenty-fourth. Oh, no, that's not it either.
I have notes on November twelve of two thousand eighteen.
So that would have been when we held the public hearing.
And I do have a figure that had a hundred and eighty-three divided by fourteen was a thirteen-year payback.
A hundred and eighty-three would be then what the total, and that was with the elevator, with the new HVAC system for City Hall.
A hundred thousand.
With securing some shared doors and I think a new water heater as well.
Thirty-five thousand for the elevator, eighty-three thousand to separate the buildings, if my notes are correct.
I don't think your notes are correct. The elevator's like a hundred thousand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's the numbers I had, too.
Yeah, thirty-five thousand was the asking price, not the update.
The, I mean, the, we can always try and list it for a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and if nobody does anything, then we're still going to have to have a conversation about, I mean, so that's where I would consider what is truly a minimum bid that you think that building would sell for.
Your Honor, I'm just a little stuck procedurally. There was a motion, but no second, so I feel like I'm in limbo and I can't talk yet. Can I make another motion?
Let me give a chance to the consulars to second the motion.
Which would have been part of it. I guess I started in the motion and then I get sidetracked over into percentage, and so I would second that. But also saying that, knowing who they are and who they represent, it makes this even tougher to gauge a price for a building, knowing what type of work YSS does for our community and our youth. So it makes it pretty tough to set a price, and so if it seems like I'm struggling, that's the reason. You get into different situations of trying to do the right thing for the buyer and also for the city, so. But truly, I think we do need to, I don't know whether it's by building by building to set a percentage or how to do that, but we seem to be struggling with this on almost any property that we do, whether we give it away for a dollar or we sell it for eight thousand or whatever, and I thought maybe we could get to some standard so we could all live with. But if we have to do it on case by case, I guess that's the way we have to do it, but it just seems like there should be an easier way to gauge what we should be getting out of the, whether it be this building or any building or any property that the city owns. Otherwise, we're going to keep struggling with this over and over.
I do consider that was a second, so I think the floor is open for discussion.
Yes, thank you. So a couple of things. One, yes, I think it's a discussion that should take place but is a discussion item. This is something separate, and we talked about it last fall, deciding, yeah, let's go for the request-for-proposal process. We're not going to put it on the market. We're going to see what kind of interest there is, and then it just makes it a little bit different because it's right next door, so it's a close neighbor. We didn't want just anybody setting up shop there, so a request-for-proposal makes sense in this situation to me. So then the other part of it is, because I get to administer a nonprofit also, I think about every dollar going toward the mission of the organization. That's what I'm all about. And it's the same for Mr. Hicks. So every dollar that he looks at spending either is for his mission or kind of maybe indirectly for his mission, or it's not. And so in this situation, it seems to me that that's an awful lot of money to redirect toward a building or fundraising for the building, because that's what it would end up being, and those funds would no longer go for direct mission opportunities. It would be sort of indirect, and for this building that he just doesn't want to have a loan on, which I totally understand and think is right. So I think they do provide an invaluable service to the youth of our community. I'm really thankful they're interested in the building. I'm thankful they, I think they would be a great neighbor, so I'd like to keep them right downtown, right here. It'd be great.
May I offer another comment?
You may.
With regard to whoever passes on this building, there's going to be mitigation costs. We knew that going in when we illustrated how inadequate the police station was and is. And I don't know if that enters in at all, but it's got to for the new owner, whoever that may be, so. And I think that's extensive.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I'll call for public comment, and after that, we can take a vote.
Just a minute. I want to respond. I understand where Mrs. Weirn is coming from, but setting in the chairs she's setting in tonight, she's supposed to be looking out for the best interests of the city and not the person buying the building. So she should be looking at what's good for us and not what's good for them. And I understand where she's coming from, and I know why she's coming from it. But we have to keep in mind that we're here in these chairs, representing the city and the citizens of Marshalltown, and not a, not a non-for-profit. And I understand that their money's hard to come by. I've been there, I know that, but still, that's where we're at tonight. That's it.
I guess the only other comment I'd throw in is, I think percentage of assessed value is a little bit of a rogue number. Market value's always different than assessed with regards to what we're able to get out of it. I mean, even our top bid with regards to that property wasn't within the threshold of seventy percent of the assessed value, so I think throwing a rough percentage kind of echo what you already said, it kind of comes a little bit difficult depending on what that property truly is. So if we are going to move forward with setting a precedent percentage, I don't think is probably the right answer with regards to how we do that from a property value perspective on what we should or would sell a property for.
Thank you. Any other Consular comments?
One of the items that I do believe we agreed on in the fall when we put the building out was that we would put it out for bid, but also with the purpose of what would take place in that building, that that was one of the contingencies that we wanted to weigh as we looked at the different offers for the building. So I do think we need to keep that in mind, that we're looking at the purpose of the building to make sure that we are getting a vibrant organization that will work within and be a good neighbor in this part of town. I think that also we could probably ask, and maybe in, there may be a way to look at, you know, some of the additional value that is added to the property and to the service provided to our community that we weigh as we look at the purpose of what will take place in the building and also look at the bids themselves. I think we agreed to do that in the fall, and so I would, I would remind us to keep that in mind as we look at it.
Thank you. Any other Consular comments? Floor is open.
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. Sorry, dry throat. We're using section four oh three of the state code to do this special urban renewal deal so we don't have to take the maximum bid, okay? The purpose is in there. I've read that code, and I'm looking for the answer to a question. The question, it states in the code that the city can't sell a property under that code for less than market value unless there is a TIF agreement where TIF money can be collected on it so that it can offset the negative effect of the low bid. Now, because a nonprofit doesn't pay taxes, such a TIF can't exist. So I'm having problems with this from that standpoint, not any other standpoint. other than I don't know how this code can apply to a nonprofit bidding less than market value. And then the question is, what's the market value on it as it exists? There's some discussion about that. It's got a new roof. It's got new air conditioning. The chief of police says the sump pump in the basement works great. Okay, now what? So that's my question. It's Code 403.
Any other public comment?
Can, Your Honor, can we get a definition from somebody on that code?
I will tell you that I did before ever issuing this, Bob Johnston, he is our
I know Bob.
Bond counsel as well as urban renewal, urban revitalization attorney. He and I went through that code section. This was issued with him saying that it could be issued under Chapter 403 of the Iowa code. And so I can certainly circle back with him if you would like me to and have him issue you all a confidential opinion if that is what you would want to say this. But this is a conversation that he and I had before we even brought this forward for you to discuss back in September.
So you talked about the market value and all that stuff?
Bob is basically, I told Bob this is what we had talked about, what we wanted to do. He was basically going through a code, you know, section by section. So I didn't bring that up, but it was, he was advising us as to whether or not what we were intending to do was appropriate. And he has been involved again, and he prepared the documents that were on the agenda for tonight as well. And so he's very aware of the situation.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to make a comment.
My name is Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. And I do reiterate, what, Mr., I've got dry mouth too, like Mark. Mr. Lamer had made the comment. We are starting to set precedence here that this is a city building. And when we have a number of very notable nonprofit agencies in this town to select it out, and the way I read the code, I agree with Mr. Eaton. I do not believe that this public building should be sold this way. And I thought the purpose was you wanted it off of the tax roll for the city having to pay for it. When will the nonprofit be paying taxes on this building? I cannot choose my neighbors next door, but this is a city building. And you're setting precedence here that is affecting the town. That's what I'd like to say.
Any other public comment? Let's call a roll.
Please repeat the motion.
Lamer moved that the city staff prepare minimum price such as 70% of assessed valuation. Goudy seconded. Seventy percent being $161,833.
Are you comfortable with that rendition of the motion? Would you like to restate it?
I'd like to withdraw it.
Okay.
I think it's too much money to ask. I understand. I'd like to know what the market value of the building is. I think he refers to in the code, the market value of the building. That's where we should be working. I agree with Mr. Isman that we should be looking at the market value. And I'd like us to get a market value on the building, and then we go from there.
I don't know procedurally if I need to ask permission of the person who seconded it to withdraw the second, but I don't think.
That's probably required.
It's the first time I've missed Roger Schell here on these procedural things.
The second was by Goudy.
I would go along with that also. I think we still need some analyzation on. I agree, and I've been affiliated with nonprofit organizations. And anytime you take off the top, really saddles them in what they're trying to do. So, and in order to be fair, because we are setting up here to be fair with the city, we also have to be fair with them. And we just have to find a mediocre settlement so everybody's happy. What that is, I'm not sure, but.
Well, with the motion and the second withdrawn, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will.
Was there any, did you want to direct me to get him, hire an appraiser to determine the market value? Was there anything you wanted me to do with this versus just letting it?
I'd like to see another breakdown of what it's going to cost for each one of the items that we're going to have to do to separate the two buildings, rather than just, you know, so we split the cost on the wall and the doors and those kinds of things. So that, but I would like you to not get an appraiser. I'd like you just to talk to a local realtor and have them give you an estimate of what a fair market value was. I think we can get that without hiring an appraiser and all that.
We can ask. I have to admit, if I were a realtor, the last thing I'd want to have to do is figure out what a building like that is worth with us being the neighbors.
Yeah, I know.
Does this need to go back on the table then?
Yeah, I was thinking I would move to table. Is two weeks enough time?
I'll certainly see if I can get something by then. And the memo was on September 8th. It was that meeting. So the member, yeah, so if you were to go back to that agenda, you would find that memo that kind of detailed what the dollar costs were for in that meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So I moved to table it to January 28th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody want to discuss that?
Can't.
Let's do the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. That one carried. Now let's go on to the next resolution, please.
Resolution sponsoring Raycom Corporation's application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for tax credits.
Excuse me. A lot of dry throats out there tonight. Tom Dimerly, Executive Director, Marshall Economic Development, 1103 West State Street. Before you have, we have an application into the Iowa Economic Development Authority to bring some incentives in to assist Raycom in their reconstruction and rebuilding efforts. We're looking at approximately $190,000 in total tax credits, and that's made up through the Investment Tax Credit Program, and a refund on the sales tax associated with the construction materials. Now, what the state is incenting on this side of it is just the gap between what insurance is covering for the rebuilding process and what they're doing above and beyond to really improve the property and the building. The application does require a government sponsor. In this particular case, the state has waived any kind of local match requirements. So there's no out-of-pocket expense to the city through the property tax programs, the TIF programs or anything like that. So really just looking for a government sponsor, as we've done in the past for other companies like Lennox, Raycom, Emerson, McDyne, et cetera. So tonight I've got Nick here, Nick Looney, who is the Chief Financial Officer for Raycom. If you have any questions about their rebuilding efforts, I'm sure he could offer up any answers.
I kind of wish you'd brought the plans because it's going to be pretty cool.
It is. We're excited about that rebuild, that design. We take a lot of pride in serving the public safety of our community, and we want them to be proud of who they do business with. So we're very excited how that's going to turn out. Marshalltown's strong. That's what we're about.
Exactly. So one's a pole going to get back up.
There's been a lot of debate whether we should just leave the pole, or we have plans for a new one.
I like a bid on an angle. That kind of reminds everybody what happened.
It tells a story, that's for sure.
Yeah, we could have kept ours too, here, this building.
I would move, do we pass a resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? I can't imagine there would be. Let's call a roll.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Like the Veterans Home, the Raycom is another one of those real gems we've got here in this town. High-level employees, high engagement and volunteer stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again for all your support.
Madam Secretary, let's go to the next resolution, please.
Resolution approving quote and award to K&amp;W Electric for the police and fire station traffic and signal improvement project. $60,480.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Not sure I identified myself during the discussion phase. This will be for addition of a attenuated traffic signal at Sixth and High Street adjacent to our new police and fire facility. It would only stop north and south traffic for an emergency vehicle leaving the facility to head to the west side of town. I had Bolton and Mink, as an extension of my staff, solicit quotes. The engineer's estimate, I believe, was something on the order of 92,000, and the bid came in pretty favorably at $67,480. And I would ask the council to approve, accepting the quote and awarding the contract because there would be a fairly long lead time on metal poles. So we'd probably be looking at summer, end of summer, maybe even early fall before the traffic signal is operational with getting poles.
How are we doing on the budget still?
This would be, we didn't include that, but this would be well below, I think, what we estimated for the traffic signal in the budget, not just what the engineer estimated. And then maybe to add on to that, there is another line item in our budget, if you remember, serves for traffic signal changes at Center and Anson. It was Bolton and Mink's traffic engineer's recommendation that at this time, we don't make any changes, that we should monitor that situation, and we can certainly make changes in the future if the situation does exist. But it was their professional engineer opinion that a situation should resolve itself there because we already have traffic continuation. That means when a fire truck approaches, it has a signal that gets sent out, basically a strobe light, that will change that signal to give the green for the traffic coming out from the police and fire facility.
Any questions?
One, you're going to do, do you have to do any traffic? Because those lanes are pretty tight there at Sixth and.
No, this does not include the changing to any pavement. It was also reviewed by Bolton and Mink's traffic engineer. They did suggest that we contact the property owner on the southwest, southeast corner and ask them to do some tree trimming. That just happened to be Dr. Drager. I talked with him, and I believe he's either made those trimmings or he said he'd be more than willing to work with us in the future. They also had, they made no recommendations for changing of the signal or the intersection there, sorry.
Good.
Any other questions? No public, right? Okay, roll call. Thank you.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. Would you read the next item, please?
Resolution awarding the bids for the removal of tornado damaged trees to top-notch tree service, Marshall County Tree Service, and Finco Tree and Wood Service.
Is there a motion to approve? Show move, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion?
This is one of our items that is, we have submitted for funding under our Category A FEMA request. And I can tell you that bids on this one came in significantly lower than what we anticipated. We had estimated about $250,000 to remove the approximately, I was going to say 500 trees from the terrace, as well as then another, I believe, 20 root balls from the terrace, and then I believe another 25 stumps from the terrace in city parks. So the total comes in somewhere in the, I think, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but between the three low bidders comes in, in the neighborhood of, I believe, 130,000. So it was significantly less than we thought. I had hoped to have the form of contract before you tonight, but because it is dealing with federal funds, it does have a lot more language than what a standard contract would have. So what's before you is accepting those bids, and then as the contracts would be available, authorizing the mayor to execute those contracts.
Any questions? Comments? Ms. Martin?
I understand that federal regulations on tree removal stump with, under FEMA is quite strict. Is that correct?
Yes, so, I mean, just something that we have to keep in mind that's going to be our cost to bear in the future is that FEMA only pays for the tree or the stump to be flush cut. And so that means that there are going to be 500-plus stumps that are in the ground in the terrace, which will be our responsibility to remove at some point in the future. As we put together the road use tax preliminary budget, which is where the right-of-way maintenance comes out of, including the terrace trees, we have adjusted that to begin some of that work in this current fiscal year and what you'll see, I think, on January 28th or later, as well as in increasing that budget for next year as well, just so that we don't have to be on sort of a 10-year plan of how to get all of these stumps removed.
Could you restate for everybody the timeline on this motion?
Yes, so we have until March 11th is the six-month mark from our date of declaration, and that is when all emergency work, which is what this is deemed to be by FEMA, is to be completed. We have already talked to them about the nature of this work, and we didn't know how things would look bid-wise. And so part of the contract will be that the contract holder has to notify us. I think it's by February 12th or 11th if they do not believe they can complete the work by the deadline date. And so then we'd be requesting an extension. And I think we'll be requesting an extension on some other emergency work as well, just based on how things have sort of folded, unfolded here over the fall and here now into winter.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion? Public discussion? Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Now we're on to item number five, a public hearing involving land lien subordination. And I think this is where I have to follow my cheat sheet and declare the public hearing open at 6:37 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
I have not.
Any public comments? That ought to come after staff review, really. Let's go to staff review.
Michelle Spontheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We discussed this at your last meeting, and you've had several of these before you over the past several years. This is a subordination request related to one of our lead hazard control projects that we completed, property at 904 West Nevada Street. In this case, the owner is looking to refinance their loans, and since our lien that we have still is in its time period, the lender is requesting, the owner is requesting that we take a subordinate position to the primary mortgage. So what we usually look at with these is what the appraised value of the home is, the remaining balance of the lien, the new mortgaged amount, to make sure that we still have some difference in there should they go to sell the property, that we could recapture our funds. And in this case, we do. That does satisfy that, and we would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any council comments? Any public comments on this issue? I'll declare the public hearing closed at 6:38. And is there a motion to approve it? Move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Carried, very good. Thank you. Now we're on to the discussion item phase of the city council meeting. The first one is the option for sale of land on Southridge Road.
Yes, that's my item, Your Honor. As you'll recall, we did recently purchase four and a half acres on East Southridge Road between Timber Creek Park and Governor Road for the purpose specifically of constructing South Seventh Avenue. Councilmember Lamer and I had talked about would there be a possibility of, you know, a developer looking to buy the land and install the road? And is that something that we could look at? And looking at it further, it would be something where we could issue a request for quote document to basically ask for a bid on the property with the contingencies being those that I sort of highlighted in the memo of that, you know, there would have to be a preliminary plat and a final plat and dedication of the right-of-way by certain timelines, as well as then. as well as then having a roadway constructed in this calendar year, which was our intent as well, and that it would be done to the standards of a city street if we were to accept it. And so now would, if this is something you would like to try before we move forward with any, anything else other than, you know, just the purchase of the property, which we've completed, now would be the time to do it. You know, I propose that we would have potentially a due date of February fifth. This would not hamper our efforts of having ultimately, if this doesn't go, that we would still have the time to design and put this roadway out for bid and do what we needed to do in that process.
Discussion?
The only question I would have is the length of time that it was on the market prior to the city engaging in the acquisition of the land fees. And so if we're just gonna be, we're gonna be reselling the property as is with the installation of the road. Nobody was interested in the property by itself, maybe there was. But who else was interested in the property? How long was it on the market? Now that we have a contingency on top of that, I don't know if we're just repeating the process and why we kinda required it in the first place.
The reason, excuse me, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
The reason I asked for this to be on is, is I was approached by the developer of the lot south of there that he would be willing to make a trade, and he would put the road in and do the right, and give us the right-of-way. And he would do that next summer at his costs. And the cost of doing that is almost equal to the cost of what's left on the land. So it'd be an even trade for him. He'd get the land, we'd get our road and what we wanted, and we wouldn't have to subdivide it or do any of that extra work. But he'd still give him some control over what kind of houses are built next to his subdivision. And that's where it came from. And I think for us, we don't, we don't have to do any of the roadwork, we don't have to do any of that. And if we can trade, if we can trade, make this trade work, it's a go for both of us, and it actually saves us some money. So that's where it came from. Okay.
If I'm thinking of the same developer, if I'm thinking of the right one, boy, that neighborhood that he developed out there is really nice. I would want to protect that land.
And that's what he wants to do.
Yep. Any other questions or comments?
I would ask it to be put on the next council agenda, and we can move forward. Opening it up, yes, but some of our restrictions, requirements.
If you could make a motion to direct me to prepare the documents as sort of specified in my memo, then I don't think it would need to come back to a council meeting until we've received an offer or until it's, a bid closing has happened and there's an update.
Then I would do so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Was that seconded by Goudy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Budget discussion item number two is property tax valuations.
Good evening, Diana Steiner, Bud Finance Director. So taxable valuations, from my memo, I kind of explained how to read the different paperwork. Let's see if I can get this bigger for everybody to see. So this is kind of a history of our valuations and levies from fiscal year seventeen to fiscal year twenty. So you can see that they are increasing, which is good. So what we refer to as our regular general levy is the eight-ten levy. It has increased again this year. Our library has a twenty-seven cent, and our emergency levy has a twenty-seven cent levy, which voters approved, and capital projects is capped at sixty-seven point five. So this chart kind of shows you the eight-ten levy, the growth of that. With our rollback percentages declining for residential and multi-residential and the tornado, the levels of growth are unsustainable, so we expect this to go down next year. So does anybody have any questions on this one?
Are you taking, trying to give us a guess on next year? Are we looking at twenty percent, thirty percent?
Just, you know, what I did with the CIP and kind of looking at things, and there's still some very big unknowns out there, was looking at holding probably what things look like with what this current fiscal year is, that there was some minimum growth. We did use a one-point-five percent valuation decrease earlier in the year when looking at our property tax schedule and valuations. And so I think, you know, whether it's one-point-five or one-point-nine in terms of valuation decrease, I think that's probably at least safe to be right now until we know more. Lennox is the big one that we still don't know.
And JB Swift did another construction project too, so there's probably more there too.
Yeah, yeah, there is, and that's where, you know, there's, you know, it's also hard to predict. Diana and I had talked about this, is that the residential rollback is projected to decrease in the future, which then impacts everything else. So there's a lot of moving pieces besides just the valuation, but we are still looking at that and having to put together sort of all that information about major renovations, as well as then those properties that we know have been demolished or will be demolished to put it all together. And we haven't gotten that far quite yet.
So you're using one-point-five to one-point-nine percent?
One-point-nine percent at this point, in terms of valuation loss, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
The next handout is your taxable valuations. So again, this is a history from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year twenty. So again, taxable valuations are calculated based on your assessed value, and then you multiply it times the rollback percentages, which you will see on the bottom of the page here. So this started in fiscal year seventeen, we started getting a rollback. You can see the percentages are going down, and like Jessica mentioned, we're estimating another two-point-three percent increase down in fiscal year twenty-one. Multi-residential continues to go down and will go down until it hits the residential rate. So you can see this is a big, a big reduction. Industrial and commercial properties are capped at ninety percent. So you can see the percent increase from the prior year as we go along here. So overall, from fiscal year nineteen to the current fiscal year, taxable valuations increased by twenty million dollars. Any questions on the sheet?
Yeah, just one. We already took a hit from Lennox, right? And that's already on here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
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 That was just for information.
Thank you. And then our next item is the long-term debt schedule.
So this form is part of the budget package. It lists out what our debts are and the amount of issue, and whether they're GO bonds, which is general obligation bonds, or whether we're paying them back through our enterprise funds. So it lists what we have for principal for the year, what our interest is, and then our bond fee for the year, so it gives you a total. So then the last two columns are split between whether we're paying it from other sources or whether we're paying it from our debt service levy. So the ones that we're paying from other sources is Row Two, the seventy-nine thousand, two forty-four, is from TIF. The next item, the two-hundred-and-eight, six-sixty-two, is also from TIF, and the seventy-seven, nine-sixty-four. So these three together are coming out of TIF. The rest are all coming out of our enterprise funds for storm and sewer. Last year, we decided to take the new property tax relief percentage of seventy-eight percent, and we're estimating local option sales tax to be two-point-four million dollars. So we're applying all of that against our debt service, which reduces it by two-point-four million. I'm sorry, I misread it. We're projecting a three-point-one million dollar local option sales tax, so seventy-eight percent of that is two-point-four million. So that's why we're subtracting it off there, to reduce our levy. Also, last year, we took the fund balance from our property tax relief. So last year, we took six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars and reduced it even more. This year, we would have three-hundred-and-ninety thousand available to reduce that. And so if you would like to give me some direction on that, or if you want me to go ahead and take that, or whether to see the total picture, which we will be bringing back in a future meeting for our overall levy rate.
We will bring that back to you so you know what your options are and what that looks like in terms of the total tax levy.
Any questions on any of this?
Oh, go, sorry. Nope, you're good. I'm gonna go to the next item.
That's what I was gonna do.
Okay.
A ration.
The next item is the first draft of the capital improvement plan and capital expenditure purchases. And our software is not the easiest to just run you one report that gives you, you know, projects by fund. So you have kind of two things before you here. But the easiest report and the one that you're used to getting has a little bit less detail, is the sources and use of funds. The memo that I gave you has a brief description of kind of each of the funds, some of the major projects in them, and then how they're funded, if there was a reason to state that. And so I'm not gonna go through this document by every page, but just sort of talk about a few of the bigger funds. Fund zero-three-zero is our capital improvement tax levy fund. So there is a separate tax levy that we have that funds basically all capital purchases for departments that don't have another designated funding source. This was also where, in this fiscal year, we deposited our vehicle, insurance vehicle proceeds so to allow for the purchase of vehicles, because on every vehicle there was a little bit of an overlap. So I will say that I think departments have been used to paring this one down significantly because we are not very heavy on what we have in here by department. And so what I want to bring you to at the bottom is that we, ending balance-wise from nineteen to twenty and so forth, we do have some decent balances there. The one thing that I will say is that we do have a new Parks and Rec director who will be starting soon, and so his input is not into the future years of this. So that's where I would think next year, when we come before you, this could look a little bit different in terms of what Parks and Rec projects might be proposed. One other fund that we talked about here recently was the building maintenance fund, which is Fund Zero-three-One. This one has had a balance in it, and as you can kind of see, we're looking to draw down that balance. The Carnegie tuck pointing is not yet completed, but should be by June thirtieth. The other major projects for this fiscal year is still to remodel the first floor of City Hall. And then the City Hall building system improvements in fiscal year twenty encompasses the changes to City Hall for the elevator, the HVAC, and everything else, assuming we do go ahead and sell the police station building. And so that's kind of the major things. This one used to have a lot more departments and a lot more buildings with it, but that has been pared down with not putting any more money into the police and fire building or the senior citizens center. The other one, which we kind of had a discussion about this on December twenty-sixth, was Fund Zero-three-Two, Zero-three-Two, the CIP large vehicle equipment, and this will be for the purchase of a new aerial truck in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. We are proceeding with our designated set-asides of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. And as you can see, up at the top showing bond proceeds of five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to get to that million-dollar level. So that is where that one is planned for the time being, with the purchase to be in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, but setting forth the plan that we'll continue to set aside dollars from Fund Zero-three-Zero into this special fund. The road use tax has a lot of stuff, and there's just a few things I'll draw your attention to, which would be the median improvements along Highway fourteen from Olive Street to Affront Drive. We had talked about in previously approved agreement with the DOT whereby we would be repaying them over three years. And so what you see in fiscal year nineteen is the engineering part of this. Fiscal year twenty is the first payment that we would anticipate, less what would be coming from the stormwater funds for the stormwater aspect of this, and then the remaining two payments by fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two of five-hundred-and-ninety thousand. Also included in here, this is one of those things that has really just gotten sort of set off to the side specifically with the tornado, but it is something that has continually come up as a priority for quality of life, which is railroad crossing safety improvements. And so we do have a rough estimate of a million dollars for improvements there. So it's there. It's certainly not a project that you have decided to do. It would be something that would come back before you, but it does show that we have the funding available to make those changes. We also just have our standard sort of designations towards different road projects. Local option sales tax, we're showing, using some of that for street programming and street improvements in fiscal year twenty. The capital grants fund just kind of changes as we go. Police grants, again, those kind of change, but we just have a budget there. Airport projects, this is also one that we've talked about here recently to draw your attention to, where we are showing bond proceeds of one-point-five million in fiscal year twenty to match up with the state and federal grants to complete a hangar and terminal in fiscal year twenty. It might not time up fiscal year-wise because the federal year is a little bit different, but that's what we're looking at, and that's how we've got that programmed in here. And then police and fire building, you get the more detailed allocation on that, so I don't want to belabor that one. The other one to talk about, which we just recently talked about as well, and you approved tonight, was the transfer in from the general fund of that existing solid waste assessment of four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, almost four-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand. And so that really puts this fund into a position where it's going to continue to have cash, draw interest, and hopefully provide an ongoing funding source for the D and D program. I should note that this does not include anything that is tornado-related or part of our Category B FEMA demo request. And so the other funds after this, you get into more of the proprietary funds, which are very specific to some projects. And so there's nothing further I'd like to present at this point, but just see if there's anything that you would like changed prior to us coming back to the January twenty-eighth meeting with our final draft, second and final draft, or give you the option that if there is something you would like me to bring back, we can do that here, you know, at that next meeting, if it's not something you have available to talk about right now.
I have one item, if I can, under the Park and Recs capital item, the Timber Creek Bridge replacement. Is that the one behind the mall that washed out?
This is, yes, this is the one that is currently hampering you from being able to make a full loop around Timber Creek Park.
The bridge has been deemed that it's not, couldn't be used again. We have to do a new one?
I believe it will be able to be used again. I don't know, Justin's been slightly involved. We've needed to do a hydraulic study to figure out where the bridge could be placed, I believe, because the footings had washed out, and so I think this was new footings just to reset the existing bridge.
Hopefully, yeah, that's our intent. But yeah, the city administrator touched on it, they're gonna do a hydraulic study to make sure that that length of bridge was adequate before we go and reset it and have the same results in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
One thing I will point out, I think it did point out some things that could change. Anson Park improvements, I have a better cost estimate now of what that would look like to address, you know, safety and accessibility. And so that number will be going up in the next draft that you have.
Any other questions or directions?
Okay. Next category.
Operating budget for the new police-fire building.
So this is one where we have been presented with a twenty-eight E agreement from the Marshall County Communications Commission to occupy the space that has always been designated for the communication system within the building. to occupy the space that has always been designated for the communication system within the building. Their proposal is to pay $1 rent and to have the city be responsible for the furnishing, equipping, furnishing, operating, and maintenance of the building. The equipping and furnishing is something that is coming out of the bond funds, that those are equipment orders that have already been placed, and that the city will be placing or taking care of that. It's the operation and maintenance that we start to address here and what this next year's budget looked like. And we wanted to bring forward to you what that does look like with the proposal for changing some language to that 28E agreement. Working with Chief Ryerson and Chief Tepper, we've been able to put together a pretty good cost estimate of what we think the cost to operate the building will be, from insurance to sanitation to lawn care to utilities. Ultimately, what we're guesstimating that that for next fiscal year will be about a $120,000 budget for the operation of the building. When we start to break this down, we can see that there are some expenses that we would propose that the Marshall County Communications Commission participate in at the one-third level, with there being some room for flexibility. Like, the first one here is for stone sanitation, what we're estimating for dumpsters and the number of dumpsters. If they believe that they could get their solid waste taken care of for less than what we would be proposing of $950 for the year, then I think we'd be fine with there being another dumpster set or another trash receptacle service, you know, however that would take place. We also have just generally the building systems that are necessary. Looking at, you know, about $7,500 a year, a third of that would be $2,500. Then, we get into more of the kind of technical stuff where we've had to sort of figure things out as we go with our IT person, Chad Berg. The heart of Iowa Fiber has a rent of $2,000 per month. That does not serve just that building. In Chad's estimation, there was 50% of that that actually serves City Hall and the IT budget in general, because it's the backup for our servers. So, it's helping provide that redundancy. And so, it was Chad's recommendation that the IT budget absorb $1,000 of that $2,000 a month, and then that the remaining $1,000 be split 33 ways, basically between police, fire, and then communications. And so, that's where that 3,960 comes from. The same was true with MediaCom, just splitting that monthly estimated bill three different ways. The electricity is the big one here. Utilities are the big one. You know, it's a new building. It's going to be, it's being built to be very energy efficient, but of course, there are more square feet to heat and cool. Ultimately, we thought the natural gas was not an area where there was probably going to be much control over the, by the Communications Commission of their area, because we would be heating the building no matter what. That's going to be using the gas. But, the electricity is where, we believe that that's where they'll be drawing down most of that bill. We did look into seeing if we could do a change order to separately meter at this point, and it was not possible. I think it was like a $100,000 change order based on where we were at. And so, that was not a change order anybody wanted to bring back to you all. So, that's where, we really don't have a great way to monitor actual electrical use. And so, again, that's where we applied the formula of splitting everything by a third. So, that would have them paying, I hadn't done the percentage on this, but it looks like it'd be 20% about of the total building costs or that total building budget. And so, that's our proposal to you. You've seen the 28E agreement that they've presented and what their proposal to us is.
Council comments or questions?
So, you're looking at the total potential budget for the entire building or just that section of the building is 50,000 annually? I'm looking at the big number.
The electricity, that's for the entire building. And so, we really can't break it down just for their use. But, given the equipment that they're operating 24 hours a day, and granted, fire and police will also be operating 24 hours a day, but not as intensive of electricity users for that full 24-hour period.
I believe the record will reflect that I'm automatically on that board, and I was one of those who voted in favor of the 28E agreement that was sent to the city. If there aren't any other...
It's not getting hurry here. I think a dollar is not enough. We've separated that also. The city has actually no control of that. A separate board and commission now oversees the 911 system. I had a call today, and maybe the chiefs can help me out here. Somebody, the person that called me said that in Grundy County, that the sheriff's office takes the 911 calls up there, and when they close at 5 o'clock at night, those calls then are transferred down here. Is that right? No? We do just Marshall County, right? Okay, all right, thank you. I think staff has put together some pretty good ideas here. I think they need to, we're furnishing a pretty nice piece of property out there to work in, and I think they should share some of the costs. So, I'm in favor of looking at, not a dollar, but looking at some costs where they're sharing some of the costs.
Any other council comments? Otherwise, I'll open it to the public.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished councilors. Steve Hoff, Marshall County Sheriff, Chairman of Marshall County Communications Commission. To bring a little bit of background with 28E that we are cooperatively entered into, this commission is another taxing authority in Marshall County now. It was primarily, came to fruition by a levying capacity issue with the city of Marshalltown. The agreements at the time where I attended 911 Services Board meetings over and over for months and months prior to this commission being formed, I repeatedly heard from those members and the former mayor and Ms. Kinser that the only thing that was going to change was how wages and benefits were funded for the city of Marshalltown. So, at that time, we were in a cooperative agreement where it was funded between the city of Marshalltown and Marshall County by approximately a 60-40 mix, 62% by the city, 38% by the county. The agreement, as I followed along, they did everything they could to make sure that the intent, the meeting of the minds for that agreement was followed. The bond agreement for the Marsh Town Police and Fire Department, for those of us that live here in the city, that communication center was largely at a marketing point for that bond issue with our communication center operators sitting in the basement with the storage of sewage backups. The city of Marshalltown has operated that communication center jointly, at least since the mid-1980s. With the creation of this commission, I would caution that there's a wariness among the incorporated areas that represent this board and Marion Township that has created some enmity. And many comments to me individually about a willingness to either take this 28E, not this 28E that's being proposed here, but the one that created the commission, either the district court to have it dissolved, because it does not represent a meeting of the minds, or to take the appropriate action allowed by the law to dissolve the commission. So, as you move forward with this agreement, I would please ask that you consider those options, consider the original intent of the agreement. All of those meetings were recorded. And each time that there are unintended costs and consequences to this agreement has created an issue with the commission. After the form of the commission, prior to the commission being formed, I warned the former mayor, Board of Supervisor Patton, Ms. Kinser, that I believed it would change the working relationship of the communications operators, that by the language in the agreement, that it would change them from being, in fact, Marshalltown city employees to employees of a commission. And through the advice of council was found that that was correct. Those dispatchers, after the fact, found that they were not employees of the city of Marshalltown, but they were now, in fact, of a 17-member commission. That was one of the consequences. So, not, it wasn't just a matter of how wages and benefits were funded. On top of that, the commission then has to provide insurance, because it's now an independent taxing authority. There's a cost of thousands of dollars. Every time the commission has turned around, there's been an additional cost. And it's not exactly a pass-through. For example, the dumpsters here, whatever this commission is going to be asked to pay for, they're going to tax for. They don't have multiple line items to decide where they're going to spend less for. Anywhere that the Marshall County Communications Commission is asked to spend money means that we automatically pass that levy through to the taxpayers. Is the Marsh Town Police Department going to use a smaller dumpster if the Marshall County Communication Commission decides that they're unwilling to pay $950 or whatever the fee is for a dumpster? I would also remind the city that this 28E, this intergovernmental agreement discussion began last June. You have a seat at the table. Here we are in January of 2019, where our budget proposal has already been passed. And now, this is just before coming before you as a discussion item, where it was also submitted to the city of Marshalltown in December. Do you have any questions for me?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come here. I'm Bill Patton, one of the supervisors and part of the board with the communications and also the 911 Service Committee. We're working hard to make this work. 911 then has been asked to take on, or we were forced to take on, the ambulance dispatch. That could easily run into well over $100,000 more per year. We don't know how we're going to be able to accomplish all of that. But, we do know that the people within our community really feel that a dispatch that shows the ability to help give advice if there's someone that's called in for an ambulance call, and someone's choking and they need some advice, rather than just saying the ambulance is coming. That's one of the expenses that we're incurring. We had no idea that we're going to incur that. We really had no idea that all the expenses that you're talking about tonight, that we were going to incur. Most of the ambulance calls are within city limits, two-thirds, sometimes more. And I don't feel that it's right to split some of those costs by one-third. That's just, I think, unfair. But, thank you for listening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you letting us all get an opportunity to explain. I don't have a lot of background. I'm Kim Elder with the Emergency Management Agency. I don't want to go into the details that the rest did, but I just wanted to get everyone a background on 911 funds can only be spent for certain things, and these are things that can't be spent for, so it can't go through the 911 board. So, any of these fees or any other fees that the Communications Commission would come into and need to pay have to be levied. That is the only income they have, is through the communications levy. I'm involved because I'm part of the board. That levy runs through my budget as a pass-through, because that's the way Iowa code is written. So, just so you're aware of where those monies come from and what they can be spent on. So, anything asked here, just to let you know what 911 difference, 911 and Communications Commission differences are. The 911 board can only pay for the things they're paying for now, phone lines and the things that are on their budget. And we can get into that if you would like me to. And then, the levy is specifically for the Communications Commission. When it was formed, that's their only income and only way that they can bring money in. So, that being said, our budget was already set. We did have some proposals because of the hospital changes and how we've taken over more communications responsibility through 911. There will be incurred costs, because we have to, the EMD, which Bill just spoke of, the Emergency Medical Dispatch, will have to be implemented at some point. It's not yet. We don't have that budgeting money there yet, although the public expects that. Like Bill said, more than just answering and saying the ambulance is on the way or the law enforcement are on the way. So, that's something we seriously are looking at and have to for our public. But, some of these other incurred costs are really going to be hard, almost taxing twice, because you're already taxing for the building, and then you're having to levy again for renting that building, basically, with these funds through Marshall County Communications Commission.
Any other comments?
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. My name's Evan Fulk. I'm the mayor of Laurel, on the Marshall County Communications Commission, as well as the EMA Board and the 911 Commission. One thing that I'd like you to think about is that you knew you were building this building, this new complex for police and fire many, many, many months ago. And yet, now is when these costs come up. And if there wasn't a cost study done back then, I don't understand why. So, it's kind of odd to me. And the other thing is, is that Marshalltown has had a partnership with the entire community for the 30 years that I've been here, and I've never seen anything like this come from that. I actually built the current communication center. I was a project manager for it back in 2000 when it was built. So, I have a very close connection to those folks that work down there. And it just seems to me like this has gone steadily from the instigation of this commission downhill as far as our partnership with Marshalltown. And I think it's very important that we maintain this partnership. And this amount of money is not the way to maintain that partnership. As the other gentleman I brought out and Ms. Elder, that money's got to be from somewhere. And so, no matter what, it's going to be a tax. And that's going to be on everyone, and proportionately, there are more people in Marshalltown. So, that amount of money is going to be coming more out of Marshalltown tax regardless, whether it shows on your line item or on ours.
Any other public comment?
I feel the obligation to disclose that I ran head-on into that enmity at the first meeting that I attended. I knew nothing about E911, except having been down there a few times to watch the fine staff people that we have. And at, I think, the second meeting, and apparently, it always alternated between one of the supervisors as the chair to the city of Marshalltown mayor as the chair, and then back and forth. At the second or third meeting, I was voted out of office. And so, another person replaced me, which was good, because the sheriff is the chair now. He knows the communication systems like the back of his hand. And I'm glad not to have that responsibility. But, I certainly did recognize the enmity. There are a lot of smaller-town mayors that think we're the 800, not 800-pound gorilla so much as the rich uncle that everybody thought was going to buy them lunch, and now he's asking for part of the lunch back. So, I do want the councilors to know that's kind of the situation. And it is part of why I voted for that 28E agreement to cost us a dollar.
Can I ask where their shared costs in the previous agreement that we had?
There hasn't been a previous agreement.
There hasn't been a previous agreement. This is looking at the new space. Actually, I take that back. I think when the Communications Commission was formed, there was, I'm not sure if we ever received a fully executed 2080 agreement for the current space once the commission was formed, and there were no shared costs in that, knowing that the new building was being built.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilor Cahill, there has been an executed agreement for the current space that we were in, recognizing there were some different risks to manage with those employees not being bona fide employees of the city of Marshalltown. They do remain your employees for purposes of administration and payroll and benefits. And more recently, one of those other unintended consequences to cost to the commission was workers' compensation, recognizing that these employees are employees of the commission and that they may have, at some point, to make decisions related to that and have a voice in that. They're now also budgeting for that type of insurance, separate from the city as well. But to your point before that, the communication center was solely a city operation, and the 38% that the county funded was for wages and benefits. They didn't pay electricity or a space agreement or garbage or those type of ancillary costs.
Thank you.
One, a few points to clarify was that a lot of this information has come better into sort of clarity of what it would be. The electricity and the natural gas, we had no idea, and it was here within the last, I think, month or so that Alliant Energy was able to get us a better estimate of what the electrical and natural gas would be. And as you can see, that's the biggest expense there. I think it was just here within the last two months that conversation started on the $2,000 a month fiber rent as well. And so the really big expenses were not known or really well estimated here until recently.
Any other questions or comments?
Your Honor, if I may. So in essence, if we were to void this agreement in whatever means necessary, the city would still be paying that amount of money, and they would still be dispatching themselves and/or whoever else agreed to be dispatched.
And so I agree, you've presented something, but yeah, we would certainly have to figure out how to dispatch on our own, and if, I would say that that would be something we would prepare scenarios on for what those costs look like for the city council if it was going to come down to that.
And as I recall, your agreement with MediaCom is that the city gets MediaCom service at either a reduced or no-cost rate because of your franchise agreement? Is that not the case anymore?
No, their franchise agreement expired, and cable companies can go through the Iowa Utilities Board for a franchise, and that was done many years ago by MediaCom. So we do not have a current franchise agreement for it.
And what does the com center need MediaCom for?
I believe that's for the TV for personnel, and so that would be something, I mean, there are some things in here where if you want to discuss further, I think there's further discussion.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. I'm assuming, since nobody else is getting up, that the discussion has run its course. Do you need a vote?
Yeah, I think what we need probably right now is what would the council like to do? This impacts our conversation for next week's general fund discussion. The other thing to point out, too, is, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about double taxation, but I think the same could be said, that if you leave this in our budget, not ask the larger county or county taxpayers to pay on the overall levy, that it's really the citizens of Marshalltown who would be double taxed in this situation.
The floor is open if anybody wants to make a motion. Mr. Leimer?
Maybe you could, Mr. Mayor, straighten me out here a little bit. We've heard comments about the commission and the 911. I understood that when the commission was formed, it was to oversee the 911 system for Marshall County. So actually, all these conversations are between the city and the commission, and the 911 is just, we understand that that's part of it, but that's what they're taking, that's what they are overseeing the commission, right? The commission oversees the 911 system.
The newly-formed commission is to oversee the communication system.
And they have the ability to levy taxes to cover some of their expenses if they, but those are only expenses that they can't get 911 costs to cover, right?
Correct. And that's kind of the way it was done when we were managing the finances, was the 911 surcharge dollars, which were a completely separate funding source and can only be used for certain things that Kim Elder had referenced, that those were only used for certain things.
Right.
And then, yes, then it was the city and the county sharing the cost of the employees.
So we're, I'm just trying to get my thought process straight here. We're furnishing a new building, we're furnishing all the interior parts of that building. We're putting all new computers in, right?
Yes.
All new mainframes?
Everything.
And everything in that, everything in that 911 system is going to be brand-new, and we're paying for all of that upfront. We're not asking them to pay for any of that. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's coming out of the bond funds for the larger project.
So all we're asking them to do as a commission is to pay some of the costs to maintain that brand-new equipment that we're all buying.
Well, so that's the other piece here of what you don't see really is anything for that. We, the city of Marshalltown, has no interest in owning that equipment for the long term, and that would be one element that's missing from the 208E, or could be done at a separate time, is that the city would transfer that ownership of that equipment, probably to the 911 Joint Services Board or the Communications Commission, whichever one was going to take on the cost of the repairs and maintenance.
What's the difference between those two boards? That's what I'm trying to get at.
The 911 Joint Services Board oversees the 911 surcharge dollars.
Just the dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so the commission has to go to them to get the dollars?
They have a working relationship to fund some of the operational expenses of, you know, the Communications Commission, yes.
Okay. And so all this new equipment, we're going to, once it's in there, we're going to transfer that over to the commission, so they'll have full ownership of all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I know discussion is over, but can I clear up what the two different things are, just as a fact thing?
No, as I couldn't.
All right. So 911 is what was originally there, the 911 Services Board, set up by Iowa code, and that needs to be there so that the dollars can funnel down from what the state doesn't use of your surcharge comes back to us, and then that goes for the phone bills and incidentals.
How big of a number is that?
Not very big.
No, how big is it?
I don't know, because I don't do that budget. I'm emergency management.
Yeah, I understand that.
Do you know the exact budget? 300,000 or 3? Okay, 300,000. So that takes care of our, only can be spent for those phone bills and the things that run the communications operations. The Communications Commission was formed to only take care of the personnel costs, so that is only for, and that's what the levy is for, is for only personnel. So we did have to do the new insurance, because that was a new thing, but it can only take care, at this point, because that's what we levied for, is only for the personnel costs. There are some dollars out of 911 going to put new equipment and new pieces of the, what do you call those stations? Each station that the 911 communications operator used. There is money going in from 911 to that building. So there are funds from 911 going into that equipment. And again, Teresa Lang would have to tell the Saks, because I don't do that, but that is part of what they're funding, because they're allowed to do that. Communications Commission does not do that. So there's where that difference is there. Communications Commission does not get any money from 911 and vice versa. That's why they were formed separately, because they are separate entities.
And when the levy was set up, it was not anticipated that there would be these costs?
Correct. Yeah, the levy was only what the 2080 was written for, was to take care of those personnel in the communications office there, so in 911. So it was only written at the 2080 for that commission to take care of, of 911 operators, not the operations. So operations come out of 911 Board. I know that's confusing, but those are by code can only pay for certain things, a surcharge, and they cannot pay for personnel.
Okay, so the commission is going to take care of the personnel?
Only, yes.
And if we decide to do this, the 911 commission has to pay this?
They're not allowed to pay those funds, except for they could pay, to my understanding, they could pay for some fiber costs, but they can't pay for any of the other. They can't pay.
I would think electricity they could pay for.
Well, and I was going to say, the 2080 agreement does allow for a tax to be levied for those other things, but I think the discussion of the Communications Commission was not doing that. So there is authority there, but the local commission has decided that they don't want to do that.
Right. And the commission has not budgeted, has not levied yet, other than for personnel costs. And that's what their intention were, to only stay at those budgets. Does that make sense?
I think I got it straight.
Okay. I know, it's tough. It's tough. All right.
I look at it like a couple.
Thank you.
Building a new house, and their 32-year-old son they can't get rid of moves in with them, and now he's being charged rent. That's kind of how I look at it.
Oh, jeez.
I have another question, and...
The guy's charging his wife for rent. That's closer.
I have another question about the taxing authority of the commission, and it may go out to Sheriff Hoffman. Does that, the levies that you put out go to all county residents? Is that correct?
It is, correct.
Okay. So either way, Marshalltown residents are getting dinged twice.
Yep.
And I just think, I want to reiterate that it's important to honor the intent of the agreement, which the problem came about with the levy capacity of the city of Marshalltown. So the other, the other entities in Marshall County, the other incorporated areas in Marion Township, essentially agreed to help the city of Marshalltown out by increasing their levying capacity, by accepting that salary, wages and benefits to run through the commission to remove that from the levy, levying issue of the city of Marshalltown and having to go through the waiver process. And so that's where the enmity that Mayor Greer has since felt came from, because the meeting of the minds was specifically, over and over, stated that this commission was created to fund the wages and benefits of the 911 dispatchers and not to be used for any other operations. And there's still a working group working on revision of the 2080. This 2080 that we're operating on actually has not been accepted by the state. And what I would caution you is, this is still a fragile working agreement, and obviously I can't say with certainty, but there seems to have been enough independent input, to me personally, that I think we're a meeting away from this falling apart and the city inheriting back $800,000 in employees. That's kind of the point of my comment. For your share, it's $1.2 million together.
The other thing I wanted to let you know, Mr. Leimer, is that part of the capital improvement fund that we have for 911 did pay for part of the new equipment there in the new communication center. I believe it paid for all the workstations, and they're actually going to have a video wall in there for status stuff. All that came through us at a commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know what the price tag was on that?
Not really sure.
Okay.
The floor is open if anybody would like to make a motion.
I'd like to have a little more time. I know the staff needs to know what to do with the budget, but I don't think I'm ready to make a decision tonight. I got to think about this, because I finally, I think I finally got everybody separated out, so I know who's who and who can do what. And I'm a little concerned about the comments that it seems like the board or the commission felt like they had already had an agreement, and now we're going against that. And so I'm a little concerned about that, and I, maybe you, Mr. Mayor, and I could talk about that later on, because I, it seems like there's, I don't, I don't like being threatened to go to court and disdo away with agreements. That usually comes when people won't sit down across the table and work out a, work out an agreement. If we can't do that, there's something wrong up here. There's something wrong somewhere if we can't do that. It's kind of like Trump and his guys. They both set their feet, and now nothing's getting done, and I think we're better than that here. I think we can sit down across the table and work something out.
I see another heads nod.
I feel that, I mean, I agree, time would certainly provide me more information. I feel that there has been a lot of under, there's just been a lot of animosity with this whole process from the beginnings, whether it's misunderstandings of what the agreements were for. And I feel that we built a building, and I think that we have costs that whether we have the call center there or not, these are costs that we need to take in. I feel that we should accept the agreement that has been put forth. I think that we're kind of nickel-and-diming. I feel as a city resident that I'm going to pay for it either way, and I think that, you know, we do have the lion's share of the, of the cost in, and the usage of the center. And I think that we built this facility, we said, yes, we'll put the center in there, and I think that we're kind of nickel-and-diming here on dumpsters and on, you know, some other issues. And I think that we just need to pay the fees.
Well, hearing none, I think we probably will be given a little more time to investigate, discuss, and see if we want to go that direction. Okay. Let's go on to the next item, which is the increased levy for the Fisher Community Center.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Per the information that we provided you, just a little background, Bill Fisher dedicated the Fisher Community Center back in 1958, which houses an art collection and provides meeting space for the community. Mr. Fisher's foundation was paying for all the expenses until he sold his company in 1969, and the city agreed at that time to assist with the costs. Since 2010, we have been levying $76,760 for the Fisher Community Center, so we levy it, and then we turn it over and pay it to them. They are asking for an increase. They would like us to levy $100,000. This would be an increase of 2.6 cents for a levy. Do you have any questions?
For a levy or for, per thousand?
For the levy.
For the levy?
Yeah.
I don't think I've ever seen it go up.
You are, I mean, fiscal year 10 was the last time that an increase happened, so you might have, I think you were, you, two of you were around, I believe. So it's been a while.
Long time ago.
You know, there was some anecdotal history, too, of some related things of just, that it got caught in administrator transitions and was just put on hold and requested and continue to come forward either, so.
So I'm looking for a direction for our next meeting, whether to increase the payout to $100,000.
I think we need to plan on it.
All right. Thank you.
Could, instead of motion, to increase the...
So move.
Second.
Discussion. There are some kind of exciting things going on with that building and the different committees that have been formed to figure out how to make it have its best use and purpose. Let's roll call.
Leimer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. We are at that point where we can invite public comment, and I'm told I have to read this again. It's slightly different. Members, maybe I'll memorize it by the time I'm done in three years and 11 months. Members of the public may make comments on any item which was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall again approach the mic, state his or her name and address. Comments will be limited to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by the mayor, who did that a little bit tonight. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and to the councils as a whole. The mayor and councilor should not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in the public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. With that said, is there anyone who would like to comment publicly?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to.
Go for it.
This is an item that, it's a personnel item, and I think we need to work really hard and we probably should, I got a copy of the metrics for the city and also a list of where each one of those people fall. And we have an engineering department that's down to one person, and we're going into spring. These people got a lot of work to do with the tornado and also with the projects that we're looking at. And I think we ought to take a look at the metrics and maybe make a couple adjustments, get some advertisements out there and talk to a couple of our people here in town. Fisher hires a lot of engineers. Lennox hires a lot, a fair amount. Talk to these, oh, Raycom I think does too. Talk to these people and find out what it takes to get a, to get a young engineer in here that's got, or one that's got, if we go for one that has a little experience, you're going to pay a lot more. So I think we need to, we need to get the guy some help back here because I'm afraid if we don't get him some help pretty soon that we're going to be looking at an empty department because he's good enough, he can go anywhere. So I would like us to put a little extra emphasis on getting somebody hired to help him out and maybe look at, have him and he can do some studies and we can maybe get the rates a little higher or whatever so that we can compete with Lennox and those guys hiring these people. I know it's hard. I did it. And I'll be real honest with you, when we went to do it, we called Iowa State and we said, okay, you have a graduating class, what does it take to get to talk to the top 10 people that would be interested in coming to Marshalltown? They gave us a range, that's the range we used. We got to talk to the top five and we hired number three. So I think it can be done if we go into it with the idea that we're going to have to pay a little more, probably pay a little more to get somebody with some experience, but I'd like, I'd like to see us push this pretty hard and get some people in here before spring gets here and we have all the extra work.
Mr. Martin's been telling me the same thing.
And I will have the HR director send you an email and talk to you about what our recruitment efforts have been because I think there's some misunderstanding as well as the job requirements that we're trying to hire for. So I'll have Jill send that email to you, to you all to explain where we're at and the position that we're in.
That's perfect. We need to get the man some help. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second not only what Leon said, but I'd like to add a couple of, couple of things. I think it's of critical importance that the city take it by the neck and go after this area in engineering. I know the job market is tight. I know we've done extraordinary things. We need to redouble our efforts, efforts on this matter. We have too many projects of too high importance and too great a value not to provide the help that we need. I would put it right now at the highest priority of what we're doing. I can't emphasize that enough.
As I said, I'll have the HR director talk to you about what have been our extensive recruitment efforts and clear up any misperceptions about what we have not done.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm not saying that we aren't doing something, I'm just saying that we need to probably, we need a little more money and some success, some people.
We learned a few years ago we needed to incentivize the hiring of police officers.
Might work here too.
Yep. Okay. Any other public comment?
Give them a lot, give them a lot of time.
There you go. Got a lot to build a house on, huh?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I know it's been a long meeting. I'd just like to discuss a thing. I speculate, I buy property and I redo properties, as you know. Okay, so I'm looking at buying a burnt-out house in Marshalltown and state code requires that the insurance company withhold 10% of the insurance value in case the person walks away from the house. The state has the money to clean it up. All right? I approached the Housing and Community Director and offered to supply a bond equal to that amount so that I could buy the property and get the current owner out of the picture. And I've been turned down for that. I can't see any good reason for it unless there's some legal reasons. I've asked for those reasons and I can't get those reasons. So I'm appealing to the council to maybe explore this as an alternative because we have a lot of damaged property. And basically, the state says if it's damaged by a fire or catastrophic event, you have to hold back this insurance money. And right now I'm being told you got two options. Tear the building down and fill the lot and cede it. That's not really good for the property tax values. And it costs a developer more to buy, to rebuild. The other one is make it habitable. That's what I'm being told. I'm offering to redo this property and get it back on the tax roll, but I want the current owner out of the picture. I don't, because right now, he's saying, well, give me the money so I can go away and, or I'll tear down the property. So I've offered the city a bond, which should do the same job, and the property could get rehabilitated. And so maybe you could think about that and look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Another reason I wish we had Mr. Shell here tonight.
I will tell you that we have sought legal counsel on that and that the reason Mr. Eaton has not been given detail is because it's attorney-client privilege. I will share that with all of you as you are part of that privilege.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, and nobody else having stood up to approach, oh, sorry.
I am Mike Carrato, Carrato Construction, the mason contractor for the police and fire station. So we've been, as of August 11th, we were last on the project, and we were told roughly about August 7th, about seven days after when the payment was due, that the payment wasn't going to be made for a few reasons. And those reasons really didn't, there was no backing for those reasons up until roughly December. And the bond, our performance bond company's been involved with the whole process and they've offered a replacement contractor. And I know that there's, my understanding was that that meeting was going to happen, the discussion was going to be part of today's discussion, but I guess not. That's what was told the bond company. So the, so the bond company is, the performance bond company is offering a contractor to finish for a much lesser price than what Story Construction is offering. It's almost about 50% increase. And the bond company at the present point is trying to mitigate damages and is, you know, they found a qualified contractor to finish the job. So my request is that you guys look at that contractor and approve him so that mitigate damages can be mitigated and that, because at the present state, if the city does not choose that contractor, that the bond company is going to reject the payment and performance claim. So I'm available anytime, anybody that wants to contact me or the bond company. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the mic? All right. I think we're done. And so the meeting is adjourned to go into a special meeting at, what is it, 7:50 PM? We have to do that first?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call on the motion to go close.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion to go into closed session?
Leimer.
Leimer. And Isom. And that was relating to closed session pursuant to Section 215, subsection 1, paragraph C of the Code of Iowa to discuss strategy with council and matters where litigation is imminent, where it's, because disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the city in that litigation. City of Marshalltown has a attorney-client relationship with Attorney Roger Shell, appointed as city attorney on May 5, 2014, and with Lynch-Dallos by council resolution approved May 8, 2017. Roll call, Weirin?
Here, here.
Yes.
Yes to go close.
Yes.
Yes to go into closed session.
Very well done.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Leimer?
Yes.